You're set?
Yeah.
We're going to call the board of selectmen's meeting of February 24th, 25th to order at 6:00 PM. And the only one taping is Lakeville. And the sixth item, we're going to take it out of rotation. The sixth item on the agenda is review and vote on request to lay out Sutucket Trail. So this is just the layout meeting. And so back in the day, there was a problem with the road, but this is just to approve the layout, not to approve the road. Next thing goes to what, the planning board? And then it goes to Franklin Moniz, the highway guy for his approval. So this is just us approving the layout. If the board votes to lay out the layout of the road, I will forward the plan to the planning board for their approval. Once we have their approval, the board will have to vote to approve and adopt the layout at a later meeting. If the board agrees to the layout the way you want tonight, the following should be your vote. And any discussion? Mitzi?
What?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'll move that we lay out Sutucket Trail.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And if I may, John, the third step is town meeting.
The what?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know that one. Yes. Then we go to town meeting and...
Right, right. And that's it. You're off the hook.
Thank you very much.
I hope you don't have a problem driving home.
Yeah, definitely.
Right, right. So Mitzi, we can continue on the budget as long as you would like. So what I did is I just made a few notes of observation because there isn't, when I say much you can do, if there's $911,000 in steps, levels, and raises, and if that's their contract, we'll wait till Aaron comes in, who's in the back of the room here. So we'll just restart in another 60 seconds. Let's assume he doesn't take Rome Bader to lunch.
(laughing) What's happening? In the minutes.
I like their budget books.
Yes, nice, right?
Very nice. I told Lorraine...
The minutes show that, you know, random conversation was happening in the hall related to weather conditions outside.
How'd that sound? Good, we already opened the meeting.
Poor Josezo.
Good, you're already on camera. So that sounded good.
No, I just have hot water.
We already opened and we stopped our discussion when we saw you moseying in.
All right, well, you guys can keep talking.
Okay, we'll keep talking.
The chairman has checked out.
So the really more observations, Mitzi, are items that I'm just bringing to your attention. You certainly will bring up all the other things about the school buses, about the E and D and things. So I took a little bit of different approach just to go through the budget. So on section one, because I grunted through this book, certainly, I'm doing this a little bit for the towns' benefit of who may be looking at it. So that Lakeville's town assessment by the school is 700, proposed, is $760,943, a 5.39% increase. Total town, 2.5%. Available funds is 566,401, plus new growth at 250. So it's 816,401. So basically, the schools would take the entire amount of the income for the town. I further broke it out and said that the steps, levels, and 2% increase is $911,683, which is a 4.17% increase for steps, levels, and raises. And then, so I just want to bring that out. So if you quickly skip to page six, so this could be somewhat, Mitzi, what I thought of is just a one-way to speed it up and then maybe you can tell me your concerns at the end, or break them in if you want to. So at page six, I did the salaries, as I said, it's 4.179, 4.17% increase. The, so the system is, the system is broken, but I'm not here to propose how to fix that. I'm just saying that when I started as a selectman, the raises and steps and levels were both $550,000. Now they're $911,000, and they'll be heading to $1 million in the next year or two. So under the staffing, which is also on page six, they have additions. My suggestion is that we don't replace anyone that leaves. So the reductions are usually people that are leaving, usually. So my suggestion is even though the additions are being offset by the reductions, my suggestion is that's the way to reduce the budget, is don't replace anyone. Just a, just a point of information. The enrollment history projection, I believe, for 2020, is a reduction of 52 students. It's 15 at Assawamse, five at Freetown, Grays stays the same, the middle school goes down by 23, and the high school goes down by nine for a reduction of 52. So I'm only rushing through this and pointing a note to you. Page seven, the transportation, I'm sure you're going to get into either now or later about the reimbursement dollars of that. The same thing with the special education. It's the reimbursement part, the actual numbers that perhaps we'd be interested in. The special education, it's close to staying the same. Overall, the special ed from kindergarten through grade 12 and out of district, looks like it's going up above 10 students. Now, the out of district is reducing by about five, and that's usually where you have a lot of the cost. The English language education on page 10, looks like that is going down. The excess and deficiency, you can see the numbers as we speak to them. The district enrollment, they brought out a couple of numbers. 2016 was 2,756 students, and 2018 it was 2810, for an increase of 54, but 26 of the 54 was a school choice increase. So the enrollment continues about equal. Then I just skipped through the different graphs, the class sizes. Page 12 looks okay for Assawamse at about 20. The elementary school at Freetown looks about the same. The Austin Middle School looks about the same. The class size at the middle school, just a cursory observation is if all the other schools are at 20, the earlier ones, this one goes as high as, you know, 26-plus. I always thought that the middle school class sizes were a little bit too large, but I'm not, I'm not trying to say where they should or shouldn't be. And then the class sizes, I thought, at the high school are a little bit too low. I thought that all the graphs should be similar in size, that is, the other ones are 0 to 30, and of course, the middle school starts at 20, and the high school, well, it does have the 20, same scale. That's kind of it for section, section one. If you skip to section five, I'm going through as quick as I can so we don't take a lot of time. The enrollment for Assawamse, which is, I'm sorry, section five, if I go to the budget, the actuals, if you, if you look at that as the last, it's by account number, Mitzi?
Mm-hmm.
So that the employer, FICA tax, just as a point of information, they're saying stays the same. I would think, maybe just get the actual of that, I would think it's a percentage, but when a number stays the same from year to year, usually there's an excess left over.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at the, well, the biggest issue is trying to see exactly what has been spent so far, year-to-date, I think.
Yeah.
You know, versus what was budgeted.
Right.
And trying to find those areas, because everything here is based upon a full spend of last year's budget.
Yep.
Versus this year.
Right, right.
My, my overall approach is trying to figure out what number it is that we need them to come down to, to be comfortable with this.
Right.
Because I think that's really, you know, that, that's up to them, you know, overall, because Old Colony is giving us another $130,000 increase.
Right, but Old Colony, you're out of problems.
And right now, we're a $600,000 deficit in the budget, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, could be growing until we kind of get all areas settled, but we need to figure out where that is.
Yeah.
But certainly, the biggest issue just being that through the contractual obligations and health insurance increases, we have, you know, more than enough to have to fund.
But when we do the, when, when they do the actual year-to-date, I guess I would just quickly look at the FICA part, which should just be a mathematical thing, but it stayed the same. The next page has unemployment compensation. I always wonder why we have unemployment when we don't ever lay anyone off. So I don't know why you have $85,000 in the budget for that. So that's the end of five. Six is the Assawamse. The enrollment is going down by 15. And certainly, they came to us or explained to us that they hired some people last year to bring some out-of-district sped students back into the district so they didn't have to send them out. So I don't know if that was successful or not. The salary in the kindergarten, I think they have going up, I could be wrong, by $77,000. That's on the, that's on the account, salary in the kindergarten, by account. It's hard to say whether that's an offset to the classroom teachers of the kindergarten, but it's only that little section there. And that's it for Assawamse. There's no, what I call, there's no magic wand that we do, and you hit, you hit it on the head, Mitzi, about reviewing the actuals year-to-date. Section seven is the Freetown Elementary account. And I just had a question that maybe you can answer, Mitzi. On the pre-K, which isn't even a requirement, do the parents, as we did in the Assawamse school for the second, for the half-day, we pay? So the students, do the parents fully pay for the 50, and is it a revolving account?
Yeah, I mean, it says in here that it's a revolving account. One of the things I want to get from them is all of the balances and activity in all the revolving accounts.
Yeah.
The, you know, the parking fee account, the cafeteria, the food services account.
Right.
The school choice account.
Have you ever seen that stuff in the past?
There was one time when I did see it. It might have been maybe two or three years ago. I think it was just really the final balances. It might have been in the audit report that I pulled that information from.
Right.
But I'd like to see all the ins, outs, activity in all of those accounts, because specifically, as you're, you know, referring to, what you want to make sure is if there is, you know, there are expenses charged to the pre-K account, but are they not actually allocating a portion of maybe the costs of Freetown Elementary to that account that therefore it should be looking to, you know, kind of be a revenue source.
Right.
To offset some of the costs that it should be absorbing.
Yeah.
You know, the conversation I had with Ashley related to food service and in their capital plan, that they had some plan in there to start to replace some of the equipment, but they have a surplus in the food service account, they're going to be using that to be able to start purchasing additional equipment, which is good. So it's really not, it shouldn't be on the capital plan, but they put it there just so that everybody knew.
But the big one that really sticks out is the preschoolers. Do you know if that's a half a day or a full day?
It's only like three hours, two and a half hours.
$14 a day.
Yeah.
What?
It's three hours a day.
Yeah.
And the parents pay $14 a day.
And it's only four days a week, I think.
Four days, you're right.
Wow.
I just looked into it by my calendar.
The issue, or the potential issue...
$14 times, how many weeks is it a month?
Four days.
It's four days. Yeah, and it's the whole school year. I mean, the other issue with that program, though, I know you say that we don't have to offer it, I think that the, the purpose of the program, and I could be completely wrong, is because we have to provide services for special needs students starting at age three. So that is a way to, I think, bring the services here to try to offset some of those costs, but I'd like to hear from them as to how is it doing in that regard, overall? Because I think otherwise, we'd have to out-of-district preschoolers, and what would that cost us if that was the case, rather than early intervention kind of coming in?
Yeah, those are typically not required, but there's a typically necessary aspect to why they exist.
Right. It certainly sounds like a low reimbursement number. So under the Freetown summary, before the accounts, it has faculty and staff, and I guess they have their full-time equivalent, is that what they say? So just, just to point out that the full-time equivalents at Assawamse are 46, kind of 46 and a half teachers, teachers and support people. And Freetown is almost 55, and they have fewer students, which is no surprise, that is. And maybe because we've always sent, we've sent the sped students to that school in the past, that may have some logic to it. Otherwise, there's not much there. Section eight is the Austin Middle School. The projection is the same, at the 431 students. The South Coast Collaborative rents a couple of classrooms, and certainly you'll address that. It's not that they rent them, it's that that money should be going back into what I call, I'll call it maintenance.
Well, is that...
Or lights, or heat, or something.
That's the one at the Grays, right?
That's, that's the one at Grays.
Yeah, I had that question as to where the revenue is on that, too.
I figured, I figured that you did. The librarian, they're, they're adding a media specialist, but they're, I guess, if you go by accounts, Mitzi, the librarian's down the bottom, but I think they were getting rid of something, but they have the librarian back in there at $50,000.
Yes, there's two teachers that they're not replacing at Grays, and they've wanted to get that media specialist in for quite some time. So this, I think, was a way, my guess is how they were going to bring it into the budget is because they have two fifth-grade teachers that are leaving, and therefore, they thought that instead of replacing the teachers, they would add in that media specialist.
Right, and I'm suggesting with the 52-student reduction in the school system that they don't replace anyone. So that's just me. So that gets rid of...
Where's that section? What page is that?
That's on, that, if you go by account...
Well, is it in, it's in tab eight, right? Yeah.
It's in section eight.
I swear, I just saw it like 16 times, and now I don't know where it is.
By account, the librarian is the bottom one.
Oh, yeah, so when you said that there was something down below, there is no media specialist that's not being funded, if that's what you...
Well, well, yeah, but they're, they're adding it under the significant changes to 2019 budget, if you come back, they're adding the media specialist.
To which page?
Which, which is the same amount of money as the librarian, media specialist is the librarian, to the best I can tell.
See, what I read this as?
Yeah.
Significant changes, meaning this is what we are adding and subtracting to get to the new number.
Yes.
So when they say that it's in there, it's because they're not replacing two teachers and they're putting in the media specialist.
Yes.
Yeah, that, yeah, so that was the piece that they wanted last year as well, but they didn't put into the budget.
Right, and I'm pointing out that they're adding it back in, and I'm saying I wouldn't mind that you don't hire anyone. We've got 52 fewer students going to school. And that's it for Grays. Section nine is Freetown Elementary, which their, their enrollment is projected to go down by 23. They're adding a couple of faculty and staff, two, I believe, which that technically is, when I say technically, it's kind of technically okay to do that, because I thought the class sizes are too, too large, but I'm not so sure exactly where they're getting that, that fund from. Because when I look at the significant changes, I don't see that they're adding two people. And I could be confused between the, the middle school, this is the middle school. I thought the class sizes were too large. So...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
To John?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You said Freetown Elementary, and do you mean this is FL?
I'm sorry, middle school.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, middle school, section nine.
Flims.
So I could be wrong in that, Mitzi, maybe the addition to the two people is in the Grays school.
Yeah.
And not in the middle school.
Well, there's one at Grays, and then there's one at Flims, because they're adding a specialist, a wellness and computer technology person. Those two, I don't know how well they go together, wellness and computer technology, but they found that person?
Right, right, they're adding the wellness for $50,849.
Right.
But I don't see any other addition.
Right, because there's a, the addition is really the media specialist.
Well, right, the addition is, if you look at the full-time equivalent just above that, it says we're going from 82 and a half to 84 and a half. I just don't see, see the two additions under significant changes. That's a little bit confusing, but it's not a big deal. Not the big deal. So under section 10...
Could be hours of other people that change, too, that's included in the salaries, in fact of bargaining, bargaining changes, you know, where like people were working three-quarters and now they're working full.
The, upon a quit, the enrollment history is going down by nine, which again, is not a big deal. Faculty and staff is going down by four, and that's where they're getting some of the money to replace people, I think. And so section 12, Mitzi, which is the special ed, obviously, if you get into 12, it, it has so many account swings, I think you're going to spend some time, obviously, on special ed. The net number doesn't change dramatically, but all of the various accounts are up and down all over the place.
Well, the net is up $454,000.
Yeah.
I mean, the, this is where you have, I believe, you know, in one of these accounts is that $125,000 that we funded in, it says tuition, 1X funds.
Yeah.
$125,000 that they're saying is a reduction. You know, in addition to that, they're reducing the one teacher, one paraprofessional at the high school.
Yeah.
They're adding in a teacher here at FLMS, so I think that probably the full-time, maybe the full-time equivalent was, you know, when you looked there, was actually a combination, you know, again, of, you know, adding in this type, you know, I don't know how they got to their numbers.
Right.
You know, but here, they're adding in another teacher there.
Right.
But that being said, certainly, it's, there's a lot of, you know, additional day school and residential tuitions that are increasing by, you know, $800,000 over what they were last year.
Right.
So, and yet, the total number of students in the program have reduced. So I think that, yeah, certainly, there'll be some time spent on that, but...
Right, there's a lot of, right, there's a lot of comments there. I mean, certainly, it's going up 5.4%, $454,000 with about the same, with about the same number of students, as best I can figure it. But it's hard to, it's hard to figure it out, but I think their, their budget accounts are what I call better than before, but maybe it's the actuals, you know, but you're going to get into that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know what the actuals are in relation to some of these items, because the, the bottom line is, you know, if we have numbers that are in here, you know, I want to just make sure that we understand that, because they're only looking at the major changes, but, and I don't know if there was a criteria of major changes or changes over $10,000 or $20,000 each, but if you have, you know, 15 changes of $15,000, and we're talking about some bigger changes overall that haven't been reduced.
Yeah.
I think, you know, my, my whole goal is, and I don't know if we have, do we have the final budget summary where we stand right now?
No, I can bring it with me.
But, but has it changed at all? Where it was still around $600,000 as a deficit? And that includes everybody, as if everybody's getting everything they want right now?
Yeah, but, right, but we have $607,000, $607,000 in deficit, but remember, which we didn't put any OPEB in there, I'm not so sure that all of the repairs add up to about $100,000. I haven't done it that way. And to clean up the highway, that, that area of six acres, we had an original estimate of $100,000 that isn't anywhere in anyone's budget, so we're currently at $607, but I'm not so sure we're going to be taking things out and not adding things.
Right, but I, yeah, so I mean, I guess just overall, it's, you know, we have to figure out.
Right.
What the approach is going to be on the meeting on Thursday, which really is, look, I need to see what the actual numbers are going to be, and we're going to ask them if there's a way that they can look in here and, and see if they can make some cuts, or what would they cut?
Right.
You know, if we were saying we need to reduce the assessment by a couple hundred thousand dollars, because we're going to go through, you know, all the boards and commissions, and we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do.
I mean, cuts are one thing, but not replacing someone is somewhat what I call easier, because the person's gone through retirement, and if you don't take the opportunity not to replace them, then you're kind of doomed.
Right.
Right, but they don't look at it that way. They look at it as they want to make...
Way to spend more money.
Well, no, they want to maintain the services, they want to maintain the program. So if somebody goes out, they want to get somebody new in to, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I see your way of looking at it, but I just know...
Well, right, I look at it as 50-something students fewer.
Right, right.
Right. So I did, I did a few others, Mitzi, and then we'll come back to your overview, which I want to hear about. Under the facilities, which is section 13, it, his increase is what I call, when I say, I call it small, it's $96,000 increase, but $94,000 of that is heat. And isn't that the heat went up? They under-budgeted it. So, so the facility's budget for, we'll call it for repairs and people, is only going up $2,600. And I think they've taken away a facility person at Assawamse. So I'm saying that the facility's budget isn't changing at all, and as our schools age, they should be plowing in another $100,000 into maintenance. So I think that they need to increase their maintenance budget, not reduce it. The capital sections, which I know we asked for 114, I'll just, I'll just basically say a lot of these would be covered through the energy grants. Most of the heat and HVAC stuff would be covered under energy grants. The food services, you said, would probably be either through grants or through the food service. The technology, I'm not so sure. There's a newspaper article about, about increases in... The technology, I'm not so sure, there's a newspaper article about, about increases in that by the school committee, but I don't see any increases in, in the technology budget to cover that. The lodge projects under the capital, which he had as a fire system, uh, that was, I guess I'd have to flip to the page, but it was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Mike O'Brien wasn't too sure that any of that needs to be done. The security updates that they're doing, I don't think are capital. I think they're small enough to be, uh, in the operational budget, and anything to do with energy, uh, should be done under grants. Now, I didn't spend a lot of time in capital, because they're not asking for any capital improvements this year, so it really, uh, goes to that. Under section fifteen, which is their grants, they don't have any grant writer, at least per, per this. So, if you went to the very first item under accounts under section fifteen, the grant writing, which if you go back to fiscal year eighteen, was thirty-nine thousand dollars, uh, most of it being grant writing. It's not budgeted there now, maybe someone else is doing it, but my concern is that if you wanna get grants, you have to put the horsepower in behind it, so it's maybe buried there somewhere, I don't know where it is. And then, obviously, section sixteen, the revolving accounts, you, you were addressing, obviously, community rec, circuit breaker, school choice, it'd be the parking lot accounts, it would be the athletic ones, it's all the accounts, but you know that.
Right, I mean, this is just the expense related from, from what I see. I could be completely wrong, but it's really, what, what is this, is this the balance in these funds? And if so, then what are the ins and outs?
That's right.
Because if it happens to be the balance, and we're looking at two point nine million dollars that they have in revolving fund balance, that they're not utilizing or using or pushing back into the budget at all, and if that is the case,
That's right.
then that's where some of this money needs to come back in from, specifically, I'd say comm rec, because the use of the facilities, you know, is, and the utilities and all of that stuff should be used to offset the budget, as opposed to sticking and saying, we have no money, and if this is two point nine million that's sitting in revolving funds,
Yeah.
that's essentially E and D, you know, in certain areas that would be otherwise able to be used to offset some of the others in the budget. You know, if they're raising the athletics fees, you know, they've got two hundred fourteen thousand in there.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not sure, because these look like they could be fund balances.
Right.
And I think they are, but I just want an explanation on that, because that certainly changes the game in terms of, you know, if we're asking for, how are we gonna handle the fact that we have an overage, but you have two point nine million, and we don't even have that much in our own stabilization fund, but you're asking us to come up with
Right.
how to fund you more?
Exactly, and I think it's to try to get, a- as you alluded to in the beginning, getting all of those, I mean, we have AP contributions, and, you know, we've, we've somewhat, what I call lost sight to public education, we charge for AP classes. We charge for parking cars in the parking lot, and at some point, and we charge more money in athletics. So, it's all of those accounts getting all of those balances.
Yeah, it's like I, I...
That's important to us.
Right, because I would like to know what this means.
Right.
It's one account balance.
Right, and one of their favorite ones is section twenty-one, which is per pupil expenditure, and they list all these towns down, East Longmeadow, East Bridgewater, Dyton, Rehoboth, Grafton, Hamden, Holliston, Bellingham, Belcher Town, I don't even know where the hell it is.
It's damn near...
But, but whatever, whatever this comparison is, it's apples and oranges. So if you really wanna compare it to anything, compare it to the towns that are of similar size to us. And so that, the, the point is that the, the student enrollment, whatever, whatever these towns are, make no sense to me, because some of them have, uh, Mansfield has a student enrollment of over twelve thousand, and Silver Lake has eighteen hundred. So I don't even know what towns, how they pick the towns, but it's apples and oranges.
I mean, I think what the nice thing is, is that there is more information than we've seen before in a very well organized manner. I think that the biggest question will really be, you know, surrounding, uh, some of these revolving funds.
Yeah.
Again, I think, I think these are expenses, I don't think it's the revenue side of them, um, but it's certainly one half.
Yeah.
It's, it's either one of two things.
No.
But, um, that's a huge component that we really need to figure out and talk about.
I thought that the budgets were the best step forward, it doesn't change the number.
Right.
And, and the number of a broken system is, is at some point in time, the only reason why we haven't done overrides is because we've sold our assets, we sold the land by the, the only reason why we have money, we sold the water tower, we sold the land next to the high school, we sold the assesses building, so you have funds to pay for things, but that all runs out.
Yeah, I mean, I disagree with that, um, in some ways, because I think we've been very good at not using one-time money for operating expenses. I think we've done a good job at explaining to people how and why we can't use, we can't keep increasing operating expenses without means by which we have recurring revenue to cover those expenses. I think we've been fortunate enough in our new growth, and in some of our other motor vehicle excise, and some of the areas that we've been able to have, some of it being tax title, you know, things like that, but I, I think that just overall, you know, while we do have one-time money coming in, I think most of that's been redirected to capital projects and/or to help us with stabilization. I think that what we're just always trying to do is to be cognizant of the fact that we can't allow people to spend as much as they like to all the time, because we don't have that as a recurring revenue source to be able to accommodate it. And we've, we've taken from other departments to accommodate those departments that are asking or need more money, we've also taken advantage of the fact that, you know, in, in one or two years, Freetown had to bear a bigger brunt of the school budget than Lakeville did, and that was just based upon the required local contribution in the calculation formula. So I think that there's a lot to be said about how we've gotten to this point without needing an override, and what we're trying to do to make sure that we don't. And I think everybody, as long as they understand that, that we're willing to work in both ways, but, you know, we're at this point where I, I just, I think it's poor practice to use one-time money to try to solve an issue here, specifically if there are other recurring revenue sources, maybe through the revolving funds, that haven't been explored from the school district perspective, because they didn't have this information. And that's what I'm hopeful that that meeting on Thursday is going to at least be a little bit more enlightening on that.
Right, I think the revolving accounts is key, but where I, where I slightly disagree is that if, if the schools want eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and we take in seven hundred and sixty, the reason why we've been able to fund that is because of the new growth, the building permits, and the excise taxes, all of which are non-reoccurring in a recession, and we haven't got that recession yet.
Right.
So...
And I was thinking that, because that, that stuff is one-time money, in the sense that it's a moving target and it's not consistent, and, and that's to your point.
What we've been doing, though, with that one-time money, is we've been paying off debt to manage our debt as well. So we've reduced, if you looked at what we had in our operating budget, we were at seven hundred something thousand of debt, which I think included some exclusion, but we've been working to get the debt service payments down too, to accommodate more...
If, if the economy stays robust, you don't have a problem.
Right.
But if it goes into a recession, you don't just lose the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you lose the building, you, you lose the new growth, obviously, but you loo- lose the building permits, uh, any fees associated with all of that. The excise taxes, instead of buying a hundred and four thousand dollar Escalades, you might have to keep the old model.
Right.
So, I, I do think we use one-times money, but we can give all the good examples of all the things that have happened, that the, the principal debt payments, half of what they used to be a million dollars a year, they have that. The interest used to be two hundred thousand, now it's thirty-five thousand.
Right.
But we are spending what I consider to be one-time funds. When we do the free cash, we are doing the OPEB, we are doing the, the roads, you know, we are doing that.
The other positive spin on this, I think, is that, and I'm hopeful that Mitzi can make some inroads with this, is, is working with the school committee and the regional finance subcommittee to have them embrace and adopt similar policies, so that they can, I mean, I think that that's something
Yeah, we've been...
been helpful for, for it, it occurring, because I think, for a long time, the school committee, you know, and again, it, it's not necessarily through any fault of their own, they, they have been very reactive to their financial needs, and they go from one budget to the next. And I think they're finally, finally trying to get some consistency and some continuity and some, some forward-looking in terms of planning. So I really think that having them develop and/or adopt policies similar to what we have would be a big step forward.
Yeah, I mean, we've been trying to work on that, and every time, you know, we've had a regional think-al meeting, um, it's kind of gotten, it's gone like three steps forward, and then it kind of halts, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to kind of move forward on that, but we're kind of waiting too for the school budget, so that we could really start to see, well, where does this, where's our starting point from? So I think from here, looking at it, at least we know, um, where this may or may not be going, and I know, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do, of course, is come up with additional revenue sources at the town level, so that we don't have to go back to the taxpayers to request additional funds. But I completely agree, John, that, you know, certainly, the overall financial health and the long-term health of the town, which includes the school district and its component of the school district, is important for us to be looking at the overall picture, and be consistent about that message, that this is an issue, that we don't wanna end up in a situation where we have one police officer in the entire town, because we have to lay off or, or do temporary layoffs on a number of different people, and this is why we're not able to provide services, because we have to balance the needs of all the departments.
If you can't, right, if you can't balance your budget in the most robust economy that we've ever seen, you're pretty well doomed.
We've had a great...
You're pretty well doomed.
We, meaning us, as selectmen, we haven't had to sit here and figure out how to cut ten percent of a budget.
Well, we have done twenty, something, right.
It was twenty.
No, but my point is, is that, that, you know, like John, John's saying, it's, it's, we should be able to do this and make this work.
Right, I don't think that it's insurmountable with the departments that we have, the requests that we have, we haven't done any meetings yet on the budget side, but if we know where we need to get to, um, in terms of how we're gonna balance this budget, and what things we do want to prioritize, because it might be that, you know,
Right.
we do wanna give a little bit more to, you know, this department versus this department, and, you know, what's the bigger need, because we're the ones that have to balance all of that out and come up with that plan.
Right, I mean, you, you look at, and it isn't just the, just the schools, but the schools stand out more than anything else, that if you, if you give four percent raises, the whole world would love four percent raises, and it doesn't change. So the system is broken, now, whether, it isn't gonna change this year or next year, but the real message is that the towns in Massachusetts need to operate under two and a half, two, three and a half percent, and three and a half is new growth, because we haven't done the capital yet.
Right.
But we, we know we have, there's money for the capital, but once that's all gone, and, and we're heading that way.
Well, and I think that's the big thing too, is, you know, as we go through our own department budgets too, we're looking, just as we're requesting the schools, the actuals spent. And I think what, you know, I was kind of told at one of the other regional school committee meetings, was that what the schools were doing is they were kind of, I mean, the reason why things weren't necessarily falling back into E and D, or they were back in the day until they had to start using their E and D, was really more based upon the fact that they would alter their budget and what their needs were, based upon where they're, they were trending on a financial situation, whereas our department heads don't really do that. You know, so we see that this is the budget that's allotted to, say, the highway department, you know, we get to the end of the year, and there's an overage, and it falls into free cash, because we, we know that we're going to then redistribute the free cash in a way that makes sense if it's recurring in the next year. That's not really what the schools are doing, because, you know, from where they were standing, I think if there was an opportunity to add in a position because somebody was leaving, that's where it would come in, whereas we have, you know, departments that have positions that go unfilled until we get to the next level to say, okay, now what are we doing with this?
Right.
And so, you know, it's a little bit more active management, I think, happening at the school level, and it is the biggest component of our budget. So, it's just kind of talking with them about those things, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to have a productive conversation with them. Um, I'm a little, you know, I always am a little leery about it, because of the fact that, you know, we have an entire town's budget to deal with, which includes multiple departments, and everybody has to understand that while everybody's important, you know, they're, not everybody can be, can get everything they want. And so, you know, we're tasked with helping the town figure that out, along with the finance committee.
Okay.
All right, so, I have a question in terms of new revenue, does Nate still sell chocolate bars in his office? Because maybe we could get each department to sell chocolate bars. And on that note, um, thanks, everyone. Number four, we're gonna skip one and two. They are no-shows for various reasons. We have a draft request for a proposal for the sale of the current police station, and reviewed by town council, and there's an ad in the central register that will hit, uh, on the twenty-seventh, and an ad in the Gazette for the twenty-eighth. So, what is the call to action with this, are we voting on this? This is just an update?
No, I, an update.
Okay.
You know, we, we put it back to, as is noted that, um, we have audited the Title V, um, report, but it would be up to the new owner.
Yep.
And it is, we note that it is a shared wealth and an easement, um, so we're pointing it out, so I just thought the board would wanna see it.
Great, any questions about this, for me?
No, no, and I, and I think it's a good idea that we're looking at this now while the building is somewhat actively used, it's actively heated, so that, uh, it is, it is what it is. I certainly called, uh, one of the realtors, not, not, we haven't listed by realtors, but I wanna alert people that there are other buildings for sale on that strip, and some, some creative bidder may wanna go to those people to try to tie them in with the police station, but having said that, this proposal for the police station is okay.
And I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up too, because we had Kyle Belkin, uh, put it on the MLS listing, did the board want me to see if he would do that again for us?
Sure.
Yeah.
I did talk to him this weekend, and he said he'd be more than happy to...
Well, what, what was the deal that we did with, with that the last time, it was little or no money to us to put it on a multiple listing.
Two hundred dollars. Two hundred.
Huh?
Two hundred.
Yeah, so, right, we should do that.
We, we reimbursed whatever cost he had.
But at least the people, or realtors or anyone looks at this.
Yes.
The, we don't own the other buildings, but boy, it would be an opportunity to combine some buildings down there.
Right.
Okay, number five was our audit, anybody have questions, concerns, comments relative to the audit?
I mean, did you wanna talk about the management letters? I mean, those are things that typically we talk about.
You'd ask to put this on for discussion, Aaron.
Sure, no, I know.
Um...
I'm just giving you back the originals, because I don't need them for anything.
Yeah, I mean, just typical, I mean, first-year audit, things that I would see anyways in, you know, comments, um, I find it funny with adopt a cash and investment policy, um, which I have other reasons why I find that funny internally, and I won't even share them, um, but that's, uh, you know, something that...
I do find that funny.
Yeah, uh, that they'd like, I think the written disaster recovery procedures, that was something that I thought was in our IT strategic plan, um, so that's kind of going on. The fraud risk assessment, I know you had talked about that, um, that's like a canned thing.
Yeah, we can do that in-house.
That can completely be done, no problem. Um, personnel files, documentation retention, I mean, that's going on now with the HR grant, I think.
And I believe, if I may, um, Aaron, this was brought up because, um, they went back, you know, some of our retirees retired thirty years ago, and they wanted to see the original enrollment form for the health insurance, because they were checking the OPEB actuarial, and wanted to make sure they were actually retirees.
Yep.
And we didn't have the forms from, uh... And we didn't have the forms from 30 years ago. But in the meantime, we've changed, we've switched the Harvard Pilgrim. We discontinued Harvard Pilgrim, so everyone's had to go on to medics, too. So we do have all of those missing enrollment forms.
Okay.
The investment, back, just quickly, the investment. The excess cash or unencumbered funds, what kind of interest do we get on those, Rita? Where are those, where are those funds? Are they in the bank or on a checking account? What interest are we getting?
The, our stabilization funds, we are allowed to invest with the MMDT, which is a higher interest rate. The general fund-
We're allowed to, but where are they now?
The MMDT trust, I can get what that interest rate is. It's higher than, say, our vendor account.
Okay.
And I have reached out to the DOR, District of Local Services. They have standard policies.
Right, right, I'm not looking to get into the stock market, I'm looking to get into-
Oh, we can't get into the stock market.
No, 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 I'm not looking for risky stuff, I'm looking for-
We're very limited to what we can invest in.
A year on a CD is 3%, a year on something else is 2%, so hopefully we-
And it depends on your cash flow. Our stabilization funds, you know, you can get the higher rate, but you don't have to lock it in for any term either.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I think, so then we've got a couple of other things just on here. I, I think it's interesting, the automated procurement system, but that would have to be something from UNIS, and that would be part of the IT program, whether or not that would be something we'd look at, I don't know. We're already talking about writing off uncollectible ambulance receivables, that comes on every single year on every single report.
Well, I want you to know that they're not on, on the books as technically as a receivable. That is, the only thing we're booking is the net cash that we've received. So it's to clean up the schedules in the fire department, but it's not to what I consider to be a write-off of a bad debt to the town, because you've never realized the total receivable.
Right, and it's on, it should be on, I think, a modified cash basis, so it's like it shouldn't even necessarily be on there. It's more in the supplementary schedules.
Yeah.
It should be. So, yeah, and then fixed asset software, I mean.
Todd, on those two, the automated procurement and the fixed asset, you know, that would-
He'd be happy.
Require, you know, funding.
Right.
But it's not something that he's pressing us to do.
Okay, yep, I don't feel like there's anything on there that's so, you know, yeah.
Okay. Number six is to review and vote on the request to lay out St. Tucket Trail.
We did that one, in your absence.
Excellent. Number seven, review and vote on a request for Taunton Water Connection from Bruce Benoit with 56 Main Street, Strad. I have attached the water connection application from Bruce. All right, any questions about this? Hearing none, I move that we approve the request for connection at 56 Main Street.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number eight, review and vote on a request from Sean Rue at 16 Bridge Street to tie into Middleborough. We have an application, actually a letter. They want to hook up to Middleborough. It will require, they will require an amendment to our IMA. How do you guys feel about this?
Well, I'm led to believe that number 16 is so far down the road that the only option is Middleborough. So if, if, if in fact, I didn't go look where 16 is, but you're telling me that it's far enough down the road that it's not an option to hook to Taunton. I don't know if you want to ask Taunton, if they want to hook to it, then let them say no first, but I don't object. And I don't, right, and so if Middleborough doesn't care, I don't care, but let's make sure that we give Taunton the opportunity to hook up to it.
Because Taunton ends right at that Bridge Street crossing.
I know where it ends, but we should give them the option of running a water line if they so choose.
So-
If they don't, I'm happy with Middleborough on this.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is really, so the issue was, we had this in front of, not this, but opening up the IMA with Middleborough? I mean, I'm okay with trying to find out if we can, if you want to move forward with it for the sake of our resident, but the fact is, didn't they want to open it up for the hospital property? And would this cause other issues? I don't know.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't see the point-
We've had three other homes that run Bridge Street, and it's just an amendment to the IMA.
So it's not an issue at all?
No, I've already called on it.
We've done it without reopening it before.
That really is my question, because I didn't know what that meant.
Yeah.
A simple amendment.
Okay, all right.
So we don't need to do it.
And that's fine with me.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, too, then.
But give, give Taunton the opportunity to, to run the water line if they want to.
And if they say no, I can go ahead with this and not wait for the next meeting?
Well, we need to vote that.
I move that we approve the, the request from Sean Rue to hook up to Middleborough Water.
I'll second.
I think, explain to him that Taunton is an option, because I think to John's point, that's, they should, if Taunton wants to do it, then great, but I don't want to hold this guy up.
No, 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 I, I, no, it's just a call- It's just a call to Taunton, that's all.
Right, yeah.
Because I don't want to say, oh, you didn't give us the opportunity.
Right.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number nine is to review and vote on a revision of the wage and personnel handbook.
If I may, Aaron, I'm going to take this off.
All right, skip it. Number 10, we have a job description we're going to review and vote for a library page. Page seven.
So is this, I guess my question, is this a full-time job?
No.
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 Yeah.
And it's, $11 an hour, it's only 10 hours per week.
I get it.
But it's been so long since it was updated, the library trustees asked that we update it.
Did anybody have any questions or changes to this?
Nope.
Nope.
Calculating something.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, so with that said, I move that we approve the amended job description for the library page as presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 11 is to review a request from our Lakeville Litter Lifters to use a town dump truck on April 27, 2019, for the Great Massachusetts 2019 Cleanup of Lakeville. I move that we allow it to happen as requested.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 12, we have a request from On Your Left Racing to hold a bike race on July 27, 2019. Looks like the chiefs have reviewed and are okay with it. I move that we approve the request.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have meeting minutes, did anybody read them?
I did, and I have a problem.
All right.
I don't have all the pages for the meeting on September 14th, it's every other page.
One, three, five. I'm glad someone looked.
You know, Tracy, I think I have your agenda, I think I have your agenda, because I have both sides. And these things are clipped.
All right, so we'll skip that set, but these other ones look like they're complete. Did anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, changes? Addendums, addenda? All right. So I move that we approve February 5 and February 11, 2019, meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any new business? All right, old business. Town hall redesign is still happening. Now, they think, it may be March 2nd, they get the window treatments installed.
It's been settled.
Community compact grants, we're working on a hiring policy. The police station, we have the town accountant's budget to actual report as of 12, 2:15 for review. It's also a proposed bond issuance timeline from Lynn Welsh. Does anybody have questions about that?
Mitzi, how do you feel about writing the bond or playing the interest, short-term interest market? Doesn't seem to be any movement today.
Well, I think the question is really, if we follow this timeline, then when do the taxpayers actually feel it first? What's the tax bill that it affects it? And I'm kind of curious more about that number more now than anything else in terms of, you know, just how do we know?
So if we do something in July 1st-
They already feel it because of the short-term borrowing, we've got, it's excluded debt.
Right, we've done short-term to date, so can we do, continue to do short-term till after June 30 or not?
Well, if I may, Aaron.
You may.
You can't do, you know, we're going to do one more ban for $2 million, March 1st. But we can't roll over, you can't roll over a $6 million ban, remember when it said that? She said the rates have not gone up since she met with you. But the real question for the board is, what do you want to bond? You know, we've gone back between $7 million and $8 million. Pretty much, if you want, our bans come due in June. So you should decide by your March 25th meeting how much you do want to bond. That way, the cash proceeds will come in before the short-term bans come due.
What do you suggest?
I would have, suggest that the board vote at their March 25th meeting, but come up with, because my question is, town-
No, I mean, suggest in terms of the amount.
Oh, well-
Does it make sense to do the full amount, or what do you think?
She put 7.2 million on this, only because I said to her, the taxpayers approved 8 million, but 800,000, we've done with free cash. So that money will be spent on design and project management.
Right.
So the building itself will be 7.2 million.
Yep.
Because we don't anticipate any other, like, unexpected costs, I mean, nothing's come to fruition for that regard.
If there is going to be a big change order, it would have happened at this point.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable with that number, are you?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want it any lower, but 7.2, I feel comfortable with. But, but back to the original question, does it make a difference if we do the bond, the long-term bond, July 1st, for tax reasons, for the taxpayers, or does it make a difference if you do it in June?
We have the issue that the bans mature on June 19th, so that's kind of the concern that we're trying to get to.
Yeah, but you can always do short-term for three weeks, I, I guess-
I see what you're saying, John, have it come due, have the bond in July.
In July.
And then not-
Kicks in and do another fiscal year.
Into 2021.
Right, I think that gives you another fiscal year, but, so I can't believe that would be a cash flow problem at all. I just don't think so.
I think, I mean, I don't mind the timeline that's here, but yeah, from a cash flow perspective, if it becomes an issue, then we could do it, but then we just push this information off a little bit more, right? Because, I mean, here, the data delivery is backdated from the, when the bans mature, that we pay them off with the proceeds for bonds.
Okay.
And we don't know what the premium is going to be.
Right.
So-
Yeah, so, yeah, just put this on a, on a subsequent meeting agenda, and we'll-
I'll, I'll find out if we can, if we bond in June, can we have the first debt payment due in 2021?
Well, right, but I think you might have to bond it in July, but find that out.
Yep.
All right, so we have no update on 79, that's fine. The last thing on here is discuss current and pending HCAs.
I thought you'd like to see that list, just so you have an idea of.
Yeah.
And I, I'll update you on the Monroe Brothers and, who was the other group?
Twisted Growers?
Twisted Growers, the HCI, Amy Cressel updated those, I reviewed them, had a couple of questions, and she has sent those to the applicants. Northeast Alternative, she sent today, there was a question, because they want to do both medical and recreational cultivation, it's two different licenses, and she had me verify that that's what they want to do. And I did verify, it's definitely both, they have medical dispensaries in other places. So she has sent that off to them today.
Yeah, the only thing is, we're not doing anything on Nature's Remedy, right? I thought we had discussed that we don't need a new HCA to get rid of their recreational dispensary. How did that come about?
When Amy sent me the one for Monroe Brothers, she said we will have to do a new one. She hasn't done that one yet.
Well-
For the recrea- recreational dispenser.
Okay, that's fine, like, so we'll have to write, send that back to the CCC with their HCA, just taking out their recreational dispensary part?
I believe so.
Do you, do you have to correct, I guess part of my question is, do you have to correct something, or it just becomes a moot point if they're not going to exercise them doing recreational in Lakeville?
Right, because we, we sent that letter, I mean, I guess we could, but I just, I think our whole thought was, we didn't want to hold it up just based upon that, if it's going to take another, like, 60 days and then steam up.
Right, no, no, I don't want to hold anything up, but let's say that you give someone a host community agreement to do whatever, medical, recreational, and they, and they don't do it, they decide to go to another town. I don't know that we, do we have to waste our time and money to rescind them?
I don't believe so.
I don't think we have to.
I mean, it's not like they have to go forward with us, in that-
Right, right, so I don't want to, I don't want to spend money redoing host community agreements unless it's a request by them to do something.
So we heard it all from-
I think that's a good move.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question, too, is, so in terms of medical dispensaries, so, you know, it would appear as though Bountiful Farms is still, you know, contemplating using us as a medical dispensary. Monroe, of course, is going in at previous location of Nature's Remedy, and then it's really just Trichome that was looking, although MD Holistics is also potentially looking, you know, they were going to come back here for a medical dispensary. My guess is that these guys who, like, Bountiful Farms and MD Holistics, would not be looking to go for a medical dispensary in Lakeville. I don't even, from a business perspective-
I think Bountiful Farms is, but I don't know that.
Well, I think they'd probably want to, the thing is, they'd probably go for cultivation. And what, the thing is, under the old medical statutes, it's still vertically integrated, so my guess is they could do a grow here, and they'd want to add in the adult-use cultivation potentially, but that, having it-
Medical only is ridiculous.
Right, no, I, I agree, it's ridiculous, but do we, we don't care, we wouldn't have to redo anything.
No.
We don't have to delete anything.
Well, and, right, so what I wanted to do, and what I wanted to make sure we talked about, as we kind of mentioned at the last meeting, was because the medical rules are different from the adult-use rules, and those have then been taken and removed and put down now as part of the CCC's jurisdiction, I just want to make sure that we revamp and kind of revisit that. So if you could just ask Amy, just to, like, if any other towns are doing this and what they're doing, and what they believe KP law must have some- and what they believe, KP Law must have something on, you know, what the impacts are for zoning of medical facilities specifically under the new regime of the CCC. Because I'd just like to get that kind of squared away.
What's your question?
That's important.
What, the question is, is because now the medical dispenser, I don't want to end up in a situation that we didn't anticipate because the medical rules, although they didn't change, they're now under the jurisdiction of the CCC.
Right.
Now, if there happens to be any sort of other overlap or kind of adjustment in our bylaws, don't speak to that because medical could go anywhere. You couldn't prohibit it. You had to zone it. So if they wanted to go anywhere, they could go anywhere that we zoned, which is industrial. But they don't need to come in front and do the same song and dance and pony show than an adult-use dispensary that comes to us. They just need the letter of non-opposition.
Right, right, right.
You know, so, so what is it really, I, I just want to make sure we're not finding ourselves in a position that we didn't know we possibly could be in because I'd like legal counsel to review our medical bylaws in contemplation of what the CCC has now done by moving them, or by the DPH moving them under the jurisdiction of the CCC. I just want somebody to look at it and say, is there anything we need to be aware of as a town?
Because recreational does not need a letter of non-opposition.
Correct. Right, because instead you're signing a host community agreement. I mean, we didn't, I don't think there was a requirement at all for an HCA on the medical side, at least not to the same stringent nature that was limited under the adult-use side. So I think it's worth a revamp of or revisit from a legal perspective.
Right, because this has changed so much since the medical bylaw got enacted in Lakeville and in terms of how the state oversees all of this stuff. So to have town council review it, I think is a good idea for inconsistencies.
Right.
And potential pitfalls. Traps for the unwary.
Yeah.
All right, anything else relative to that?
Any other business?
Any other business?
Yes, I would just like to announce that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is having their workshop this Saturday, March 2nd. So if you really care, at the Public, Lakeville Public Library from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
They'll have a box of munchkins.
Yes, and what we're going to be...
It's a drop?
It's the Natural and Cultural Resources Open Space and Recreation Public Workshop. And that's been, Open Space has been brought up at every workshop so far, so people that want to...
By the four people that attend.
No, our sign-in sheet has over 20.
Good.
For the nine events in aggregate.
So I, Lorraine has reached out to all of our boards and committees to at least have one member from each board and commission attend.
Who's coming from this board?
I will not be there.
And to at least know...
You didn't reach out to us.
I didn't see the invite actually at all.
You did not reach out to us.
No, she did a very nice invitation.
I would say arguably the most important board in the town. You didn't even reach out to us.
Well, we are tonight.
Leah, did you get one?
I did, from the board of assistants.
See?
The, the open space that they talk about, which is on the agenda, I don't know that people realize how much we really, we're paying for open space. We're paying $60,000 a year for Betty's Knit. We're paying, from memory, $25,000 a year for the land next to the high schoo, I call it next to the high school. We're paying $5,000 a year for the tamarack. And then we've had land that has been gifted to us that we don't, that we don't pay for. So when people say, oh my God, we want more open space, we're paying over, we're paying more for open space today on an annual basis than we do for the senior center.
I don't think you should send the invitation to John.
So I'm not going to the, I'm not going to the meeting, but people don't realize the debt, the debt that was incurred for the open space that we have. So people should know what the open space is.
And that is all part of it, John, they do. And then all the farmland, all the agricultural restrictions, all...
61A, 61B.
Yep, all the golf courses.
All right, I move we...
Can I just ask if anyone wants to go to the legislative breakfast?
When is that next?
I move that we adjourn.
The closest one, Mitzi, is...
I'm going to New York.
I think it is. I could probably be there.
Not even in the state.
Isn't it Mansfield?
I think it's Mansfield.
All right, we are adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.